Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Special Meeting this Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the council thanks you for being a part of your city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action only on specific items listed during uh, the workshops, uh, listed here as, uh, item number four. And only discusses those issue, uh, only discusses issues with no formal action and there are no such issues listed. Uh, for those present, agenda packets are available on the table to my right, uh, your right as you walk in where there's a blue area that says agendas. For those who are, uh, present with us online, agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashwa.gov slash slash agenda. The meetings being televised, uh, live on PSC TV, Channel one-nine-one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland. And is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting is, video is available on the city's website as well. Uh, publics may, the public may submit comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or through the Ask Pasco app. Um, with that, Ms. Debbie?
Hey, uh, council members, we're all has, President Blaisdell, here, Grim, here, Harpster, present, Peralis, here, Mayor Potem Milne, present, and Mayor Serrano.
I am present. We are all here. With that, will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll roll into item number four, which is new business, and we've got resolution number four-four-seven-one, change order number, numbers thirty-seven to fifty-two for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. And are you gonna kick this off, Ms. Sarah? Are we gonna go straight to the podium?
Yes, for this item, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. We have Michael Allman with HLA Engineering representing the City of Pasco as the project manager for this project. And he will give us a presentation.
Thank you, Michael. I'm sure it's your pleasure. Pleasure to be here, mayor, council. Mayor, council here to talk to you tonight about change orders fifty, uh, excuse me, thirty-seven to fifty-two on the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Just giving you guys a few pictures of the, uh, current project. I hope you've had the chance to get out there and actually walk the bridge, um, see it. It is a beautiful, beautiful addition to the city. Picture on the left is, uh, from the east side of the structure, uh, looking from the outside, uh, looking to the west. Picture there on the right is, uh, from the uh, north side of the structure, looking to the west. Um, it really is an aesthetically pleasing bridge, so it's a great addition to the City of Pasco. Giving council just a, uh, refresher on the schedule on the project. Uh, the groundbreaking ceremony was back on June fourth of two thousand and twenty-one. The contract to begin work on August thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, it's a, was originally a four-hundred working day contract. Uh, the bridge was open for vehicles, uh, just a few months ago, April twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-four. And we anticipate a substantial completion date in September of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, just so you know, a substantial completion date doesn't mean the contractor is completely done with the job. Um, essentially that means that they're to a point where, uh, most of the safety and operational features are available for use by the city, um, by the residents of Pasco. But there may be punch list type items, things like that, uh, for them to finish up on the job. So you will still see them around, but, um, generally speaking, they're done with the majority of the contract work. And then finally, the underpass demolition, uh, we anticipate that in quarter two of two thousand and twenty-five, uh, that is pending funding. Uh, that is something that the city is actively pursuing currently. Um, we have some promising leads. I'll discuss that briefly in just a little bit. So as you know, the project has experiences, some challenges. Um, some of those include, uh, fuel tanks that we've encountered, building foundations. Uh, it's a very old area of Pasco. Um, this was, area was originally built in the nineteen-thirties. Uh, it's a nineteen-thirties underpass, so, uh, some unanticipated things that we've encountered throughout the project because of that. Uh, the SEW walls, uh, the walls that you see in the picture right there. Um, there's been some complex things with the stabilization of those. Um, in addition, there's been some issues, uh, at these staircases. We've also had quite a few issues with BNSF on this. Uh, they've been undisclosed requirements from the railroad, and unfortunately, they kind of hold a trump card on the project. Other review timelines have been difficult to work with. The city has held to a review timeline and BNSF doesn't necessarily have to follow that. And unfortunately, the overpass agreement that the city is required to sign, um, to build a bridge on their property, essentially shifts all that risk to the city. So that's something that we've been working through, uh, as best we can to mitigate that risk for the city. So change orders, what we're here to talk about today. Uh, to date on the project, uh, thirty-six have been approved. Change orders one through thirty-six, total, uh, three-point-seven-six million dollars on the project. Uh, tonight, we're here to discuss thirty-seven to fifty-two. That would add an additional two-point-seven-one million dollars to the project for a total of six-point-four-seven if, uh, all are approved. So there are also two future change orders that are not included in this, um, that are currently in negotiations with the contractor and just simply could not be put together in time for this. Um, so those two are known. The order of magnitude on those is approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, most of that is related to a delay from the railroad. However, um, final costs on those are currently in, uh, negotiation and we're working on some schedule analysis with the contractor on those. So those will be forthcoming at a future date. The next two slides, I'm gonna, um, work through just very quickly. Um, basically give you guys the names. If you'd like to come back and discuss any of these at length, we absolutely can. However, I'd like to focus on some of the larger ones that, uh, that I'm here to discuss today. So we've got the salvaging of some, uh, saw cutting of some salvage barrier, uh, some minor changes reconciliation, some striping removal, and some office trailer rent for the remainder of the year. On this next slide, uh, we've got an irrigation controller substitution, um, some adjustment to the catch basins, uh, waterline casing epoxy, uh, for the joints and BNSF security fencing. Again, if there's any questions on these, uh, at the end, we can certainly come back and address any of them, and I can give you as much of a detailed answer as, uh, as you desire. The major change orders that I'd like to discuss, uh, the first one is the railroad screening gap. That's about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, change order thirty-seven within your packet. Uh, the result of this was, it basically came about because of an incorrect RFI response during the shop drawing process with the contractor. Um, at the bottom, uh, just up from where that arrow is pointing, um, seems to have moved, uh, from when it made the slide, but just at the bottom of the, uh, the grid fencing there, uh, the gap on that should be a two-inch maximum. Uh, during the shop drawing process, that was noted that could be up to four inches. During the, uh, with the overpass agreement with the railroad, there's a requirement in that that we have to meet their requirements, which is two inches. So essentially what that's gonna do is fabricate some additional metal plates, bring those, uh, and disassemble a portion of that, put these new metal plates in and take that tolerance within BNSF standards. Uh, we'd like to note that that's something that we have negotiated heavily on with the railroad to even let us open the bridge on that. Um, one of the conditions typically to open the bridge to any sort of traffic is to have that in place. And so originally the railroad said you can't open this. Um, and so we worked with them, came up with some solutions. There's some just temporary wood that is in place right now, just obstructing people from throwing things through that. So, uh, the railroad has worked with us a little bit in some areas, but we will be, um, required to fix that. The second item here is the escalation of costs due to project delay. Uh, this is a delay claim that stems primarily from SEW wall impacts and BNSF delays on the project. Um, this encompasses, encompasses change orders forty-three through forty-eight, um, and those escalation requests are from various contractors. Um, and those are simply due to the overall length of the project increasing. Uh, if tonight, if these change orders are approved, the, uh, total contract duration will be seven-hundred-and-fifty-three days as opposed to the original four-hundred-day contract. So as you can imagine, just simply the escalation, the cost of doing business over that duration has increased. Um, these are not items that are the fault of the contractor in this case, or deemed the fault of the contractor. So as the result, um, the increased costs for wages or miscellaneous materials, uh, being installed on, on the project, uh, are shown in this particular change order. Change order fifty-one is the largest one that I'm here to talk to you about tonight, uh, negotiated change order resolution. To date on the project, the city has executed three unilateral change orders. Uh, a unilateral change order, if you're not familiar with it, is essentially one that the contractor doesn't agree on and said they, says they will not sign. However, per the WASH dot standard specifications, the city has the authority to say, we deem this appropriate. And as a result of that, we are going to execute, execute this change order, even if you don't agree with it, and, uh, basically pay you for it as a result. Typically, what comes with that is the contractor then files some paperwork and says, we protest this, and if you can, you come to a resolution on it. However, we've been unable to do this on, on the project. So the contractor still disagrees with the dollar amount that the city has paid on certain items. Um, so what this particular change order will do, it will provide the contractor with a hundred-and-seventy-four additional working days on the project. It'll resolve more than two-and-a-half million dollars of claims, um, that are outstanding on the project. So if you total up everything that the contractor disputes, those, uh, are somewhere between two-point-five and two-point-six million dollars. It also, uh, excuse me, uh, represents a clear-all, which is a, uh, WASH dot terminology, uh, item where essentially the contractor will drop all claims prior to a certain, uh, certain day on the project. So in this case, we've established a date of April thirtieth where we've negotiated everything prior to that. The contractor agrees that they would file no claims related to any issues on the project prior to that date. So that resolved those three unilateral change orders and a myriad of other issues that are outstanding on the project. And ultimately, it avoids a prolonged dispute with the city, between the city and the contractor. Moving forward, just giving council an idea of where we're headed, uh, we've got this red boundary and this yellow boundary shown in front of you. The red boundary, the major items within that, uh, include the staircases to the BNSF structure, to the large bridge, uh, roadway construction, First Avenue, Tacoma, uh, Lewis Street between First and Tacoma, and then completion of the linear park, um, uh, between First and Tacoma. Uh, that linear park, just for reference, is roughly three-hundred-and-fifty feet long and about fifty feet wide, so think more of a picnic space than a, uh, than a frisbee course or something like that. Um, the yellow area represents the demolition of the underpass. Uh, that's gonna be done as a separate project. Uh, that timeline is currently contingent on funding. Uh, this is a picture of the underpass currently, um, just a few days ago when I was down there for, for a meeting. Um, that's required by the BNSF overpass agreement. Um, we've got some various casings and things like that in there right now. Um, but there are some pretty significant unfunded costs associated with that. Currently, we estimate that as a three-million-dollar standalone project. However, uh, we've identified at least two different funding sources that we're currently pursuing funding on for those, um, that we think have, uh, pretty viable option or a viable opportunity at, at obtaining funds to, um, to help with those projects. So staff is continuing to identify and pursue funds to fill in funding gaps for both the, uh, underpass demolition and looking for funding for, uh, the overpass project as, as available. Can I answer any questions, council?
Thank you for your time. You know, all joking aside, we appreciate the information. Uh, it's, it's very unfortunate where we find ourselves with the cost overruns that some of which were totally out of our grasp and others which, you know, unfortunately, in hindsight, we may have been able to catch a little bit sooner, but I do appreciate that you've mentioned the grant funding and the other funding sources. I think that's something that is critical, that, uh, we want the public to be aware of, that the city and our contractors are chasing outside dollars to offset some of these costs. Um, I don't want you to get in too in-depth. Can you just, you obviously just mentioned the couple that you were chasing for the three million for the demolition underpass, and you mentioned some others in passing. Do you have a good sense of where you're going, uh, with those outside funds in seeking to procure those funds?
Do you mean like what the?
Like who you're chasing and, and kind of what our likelihood of success on the grants you've submitted?
Well, they're, they're specific to this type of work, so, um, one that we're, we're gonna put in in about a week and a half is a section one-thirty, which um, probably doesn't mean anything to most people here, but it's funding specifically for safety-related improvements for railroads. Um, so it's a fairly narrow sect of, of improvements, and so, um, we've been doing our due diligence with, uh, with WASH dot on that, and they think it's a great project for it. Um, and so we've gotten really positive feedback where it scores within the state, I can't tell you, but, but that have gotten really positive feedback for it overall as, as a project. And so uh, there's one, uh, another funding source behind it that's similar related to railroad stuff. Um, BNSF is, is willing to give us support on it as well from, from their end, so, um, we have their support behind it. Generally, you score better on applications as well, so that's, that's been positive for us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions or comments, council? Okay, Mr. Green, uh, I don't know who's first, Mr. Mr. Grim?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, you know, I guess I would just want the public to know that, uh, you know, I, I too am, you know, profoundly disappointed in how this turned out. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I know on the public side, this seems like typical government over budget and delayed and, you know, and it's easy to, you know, cast a bad light, but you know, I, I I want to assure the public that I've met with staff. I've asked a lot of the tough questions that, you know, because of legal reasons, we're, we're not able to divulge up here and, um, you know, this it's really easy for an outcome like this to, um, lead to finger pointing, but, you know, I, I just don't think that's gonna be helpful and, you know, I think considering the circumstances, I mean, there, there's really, I don't wanna sit up here and make excuses. Um, you know, part of this is, you know, what our new council is, you know, kind of inherited, and we're trying to, you know, make the most of it, and a lot of the staff too at that point, and you know, I, I believe approving these change orders is the right direction, but yeah, I definitely voting in favor with kind of some frustrated feelings, but yeah, I agree with your sentiment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one question I had was, you, you noted on, uh, in regards to that screen, there's incorrect RFI response. Who's, who gave the incorrect response? Was it BNSF? Was it, I mean, it was, it was in regards to the shop drawings?
The engineer of record who, who responded on that one.
And who's the engineer record?
J U B.
I mean, a lot of these, um, change orders made sense in the grand scheme of things. Um, I think we closed the loop in regards to the unilateral, um, charge in regards to that change order, uh, but it is upsetting. Um, you know, I would like to see a breakdown of how much, um, how much this product actually has gone overboard. I mean, it's up in the forty million dollars, this whole project, right? From everything, from design to construction, based on what I saw. So I'd like to see just a breakdown of, and then what the offset was with those grant funds so that we can have a better picture. Um, but, uh, you know, I, you know, I hate calling it the money street overpass, but that's kind of what it's turning out to be. Um, it's, I thought we were, I thought this project was behind us, to be honest, and and then now we're hit with, um, this amount, but I, I would like to see some numbers, um, so that I can have a better, so that we can have a better picture, and then also just you've been on this from the get-go, what things could be handled differently going forward.
Sure.
Um, uh, you know, I have a little bit of background with the SEW walls and, and then just some of those construction things, but I would just like to know. I think this council would benefit just knowing for future projects what, where the hiccups were, and so that we can have a better understanding, but I, I would like to see just, you know, lessons learned um, for going forward, if that could possibly be done by you or J U B in conjunction with the contractor. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Peralis. Uh, seeing no further lights, uh, before we take our motion, uh, we will open this public comment. We're in roll for two minutes. Um, unlike our meeting, it's gonna come up where it's two minutes, two, two comments plus two minutes per side. This is, everyone's got an opportunity to speak here, so uh, we've got two minutes. If, if I'll make my first call. Second call. And before I go to the third call, Mr. Lincoln, do we have anyone online who's signed in for comment on this issue? Sorry. Technology is wonderful when it's wonderful.
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, anyone in here in person, third call for comments on this? Hearing none. Can we get a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number four-four-seven-one, authorizing the city manager to execute change orders numbers thirty-seven through fifty-two to the construction contract with Cascade Bridge LLC for the Lewis Street Overpass Project.
All right, got a motion.
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Blaisdell. We good with that, Ms. Barnes? All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
So it sounds like we've got a five to two with Mr. Harpster and Mr. Peralis. That's correct, right? In, in the nays. All righty. With that, we are gonna close out our, uh, special meeting. Thank you for your time. Um, I know you're in the hot seat. We really appreciate you coming back. Um, and what happened to my iPad here? There we go. Sorry, uh, sorry, I had an update apparently. Closing out the special meeting, and we're gonna move on to our workshop meeting. Um, since we've been through our call to order, our roll call, and our pledge of allegiance, as much I've loved doing that, we'll move on to item number four, which is verbal reports from council members. Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, the last couple weeks have been very busy. I did attend, uh, Tri-City's National Park Committee where we did a tour of the Bechtel site, uh, Hanford site, and saw the town of Hanford and, um, White Bluff, and, uh, anyway, it was pretty good to see the different, uh, go through the, the old high school and the bank, and, uh, so that was good. So it was all day kind of thing. And see the, um, reactor B, I think it is. And then also had a park and recs meeting after that, which was pretty good. I can't think of anything that was out of the ordinary. Um, then this past week, I did attend the grand opening for Northwest Motor Group, Motor Group grand opening, and it was really good at the Autoplex there. They actually have lifetime warranty on their vehicles. I don't know how they're doing that, but, uh, pretty surprised on that, and, uh, good facility. And then we also, with, uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell, we attended the Bezos Academy uh, for preschoolers. It used to be the old Bobby Luttrell with the Boys and Girls Club, and they did a remodel of it. And, uh, as far as the facility and what they do, it was very good. So it was, uh, good to get out there and check out what, uh, other people are doing, and, uh, so yeah, so that's, uh, it was a busy week, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milne, and thank you for filling in, in my stead for some of those events. Uh, Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also a busy week, probably, or two weeks for a lot of us. Um, I was at a swearing-in ceremony with Councilwoman Blaisdell and others for six brand-new Pasco police officers, including a friend that, um, I know from church, um, now Officer Sean Hill. I was at the Benton Franklin Transit Meeting, and we really had a lot to discuss there, especially with the potential impacts of I-2117 and, um, the, the budget impacts of what that could be. We looked at two different scenarios of really what's, what's gonna have to be some cuts and everything like that potentially, depending if the voters approve that or not. Um, just looking at ways of streamlining services and getting the, the right buses in the right places. Um, also, uh, just wanna give a shout-out to my, um, predecessor, um, council member, um, JR, because the East Pasco route has grown by three-hundred-and-eight percent, um, and yes, nearly tripled ridership, um, what's, what's been going on over there. So that was a real neat fit for the east part of our city, and, um, I also attended the emergency management meeting, our quarterly meeting, and, um, Benton Franklin Council of Governments, which, um, we're just hoping to find funding for the Road Seventy-Six Overpass and, um, the Eighth Street Interchange in East Pasco, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further lights, I'll just wrap up with two quick comments. Um, earlier today, I had a great meeting with the Amazon team. Thanks to Ms. Murray, Mrs., oh, sorry, I thought that was coming from the, the sound. Thought that was me. Um, uh, Mrs. Murray, uh, talking about the growth that we're gonna see, um, a couple of points from Amazon. One, um, some of the jobs remain open. So I know folks were worried about the time of closure of the jobs. There are still some jobs that are open, and and even when they fill the initial two-thousand that they're expecting, they anticipate having rolling jobs. Obviously, there's gonna be attrition. There's gonna be upward movement. So for anyone that's been looking and had some sort of confusion, um, certainly continually follow that, right? There, the opportunities will still exist, 'cause they've got a lot of bodies to fill, and they were very focused on making sure that as they grow rapidly, they've got the ability to train folks safely and, uh, implement a true safety culture. Um, so I thought that was pretty impressive. Um, they talked a lot about the different type of shipping, you know, and how, uh, this isn't just, you know, overseas shipping. This is gonna service a lot of the small independent businesses, so, you know, um, we're gonna see an impact either to our community or to the tangents of our community, uh, folks that may be shipping out from here, not just into here, so it was really, uh, exciting, and, you know, we talked about the importance of that facility, um, you know, can, continually working with the community, making sure that traffics, uh, the impacts are as minimal as possible. Obviously, you're putting a lot of cars on the road, and it's impossible to have no impacts, but they're, they're very cautious and cognizant of um, the growth that that's going to, to cause occur, and, you know, obviously, for our perspective as a city wanting to grow and bring in good wage-paying jobs, this is a great land for us, so, um, I thought that was a really positive meeting, and I know they're coming out here. Unfortunately, I'll be gone, uh, the rest of the week, but, uh, I understand most of you all are gonna be meeting with the Amazon folks, and I appreciate you taking them around and really getting to know them, and they really do wanna partner with us, so. Um, with that, and then I attended the Hanford Area Economic Investment Fund Advisory Committee meeting, and I just wanna remind staff that, that we do have the grant. There, that committee does have grants that are still accessible to municipal, uh, entities, I believe, till the twenty-fifth, if I got that right, which would be, I think, Thursday. Um, you know, I, I don't know if we're chasing or if we qualify or if we need, um, I mean, we always need, but, uh, if it's the right shoe, uh, let's try it on. So with that, roll, roll from item number four into item number five. Now, these are the items for discussion with opportunity for com, public comment. As I was explaining earlier, in these workshop meetings, we've recently adopted, um, a procedure where each side, either pro or con, will have up to two comments, up to two minutes per comment. So we'll have a presentation, uh, I can explain this, 'cause I'm seeing some new faces. We'll have a presentation, and then the public comment would last up to a total of eight minutes, but it's limited to two comments per side, per issue, at two minutes each. Um, so with that, we're gonna move on to item number five, A, and that's the two thousand and twenty-four Legislative Interim Action Plan. And, yeah, either Mr. Lincoln's gonna kick us off, or Ms. Murray's gonna just go right into it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Brianna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations, Miss State lobbyist and partner in the firm. Had the honor and privilege of being your advocate in, before the state legislature for many years now. In May, we had a, um, half-day legislative retreat, uh, where we discussed, uh, strategy on how the city engages with the legislature and things that are important for our collaboration, our team effort to be successful in Olympia. Uh, and as part of that legislative retreat, I outlined in great detail for you all how the two thousand and twenty-five legislative session is a, a key legislative session, and that there are many, uh, balls in the air or items that are evolving as we're leading up into the two thousand and twenty-five session. Um, we're anticipating the Washington State Legislature to have thirty percent turnover in individuals, not necessarily a shift in political party, um, um, potentially a shift, but not necessarily, uh, but certainly, and Uh, but certainly and, um, most definitely a shift in the individuals who are serving in the state legislature. Um, there's, uh, four different initiatives on the November ballot, three of those four, uh, if approved would have a significant. Impact on the budget environment in Olympia, uh, and, um. Uh, the state budgeting process aside from those initiatives is evolving. Uh, there's feedback, uh, given to state agencies just this last week, cautioning them that state revenues are starting to decline. Uh, and that budget restraint is going to be needed as we go into the twenty twenty five session. Given the number of balls in the air and the number of things that are likely to evolve between now and January, when the legislature convenes. I recommended to you all that you adopt an interac- interim action plan, which is you all providing some early direction to me on. Some of the items that you may want included on your twenty twenty five legislative agenda. These items are items you would like me as your advocate to explore as potential priorities. Um, either through research, members, discussions with members of the legislature, whether that's our local legislators or chairs. Uh, and then come back to you as you're preparing for the twenty twenty five session and the adoption of a formal legislative agenda. With some more detailed insights and information on the items outlined in the interim action plan. Items that are not on this interim action plan absolutely can be included on the twenty twenty five legislative agenda. I anticipate there will be issues that come up, um, between now and then that you all will want to consider and potentially include on the agenda. Similarly, there are items on here that you may not want to include on the twenty twenty five agenda. By the time we have a better understanding of the budget picture, we've got feedback on these items, we have research on these items. Uh, to assess whether or not they would be successful in getting across the finish line in twenty twenty five. Um, I, it, within the legislative retreat, you all provided me some really great feedback and I'm so appreciative of the feedback that was provided in the retreat. And then subsequent to that, um, this was shared with full council and I received some individual comments that have been integrated as well. Um, I wanna just, uh, highlight for you all an example of how will. Some of these items will move forward in the coming months between now and the fall, um, probably November timeframe. When you would adopt a twenty twenty five legislative agenda. Um, the US twelve A Street intersection has been mentioned a couple times this evening. Uh, and, um, I've been able to, through government relations advocate, uh, connections. Reach out to the Amazon team and they have offered to join us in the advocacy for funding for that project. To have a multiple partners advocating for a project increases the likelihood that we would be able to secure funding. Within the Olympia environment, so it's that type of relationship building connection, hey, is this something you would support? No, okay, well, that's good to know as we plan for twenty twenty five. Um, so that's the type of outreach that, that this document helps facilitate. Um, and some of the positive, uh, feedback we're getting. Um, similarly, uh, Councilmember Graham, you had mentioned that you participated in the Council of Governments conversation. I recently met with, uh, Senator Banky, who represents the community and he emphasized the importance of that process. As we line up funding for, uh, for funding requests, so you all identifying some of these items earlier rather than later. Helps us be effective in those regional conversations. Um, I'll also note that if, um, the gentleman who was up here previously is unsuccessful in securing grant funding for you all. That funding for Lewis Street underpass demolition is one of the items on the list for consideration for this next session. Um, and something that we would explore, so, um, all interconnected with the work that you all are otherwise doing. With those highlights, you all have seen this document before, so I'm not planning to go through it in great detail, but I am hap- happy to answer any questions. Either about the interim action plan or what, um, what the tea leaves are, uh, looking like going into the twenty twenty five session.
Thank you, Brianna, appreciate your work here, um, any questions or comments from council? Mr. Prowl.
Thank you, Mayor, I just had a couple, um. I kinda feel like I was looking through the document again this weekend, I feel like we really, we really need to better define our roles as a city in regards to. The homelessness situation, mental health. I really don't see that in here as kind of a, I guess, a broad, you know, platitude essentially. I feel like we need to better define that, um, a lot of these. Um, I guess. Statements are, a lot of them are from previous councils, you know, obviously, we're, we're new and they were kinda being regurgitated at this point. You know, like one of them that I haven't, I had an issue with was with the CCA, uh, one, but that, that one got changed. Um, the labor reform one, um, you know, I don't know why Pasco opposes legislation that increases labor costs, I mean, I think we should probably. Unpack that one and look into that, I think we should be, um. Partners with our, you know, with our union, uh, with our unions and stuff, whether it's the carpenters, the welders and stuff, working construction sites. I think we shouldn't really be opposed to it, but obviously, um, you know, it does increase, uh, like right now, there's recently some new, some new legislation in regards to. The apprenticeship utilization requirements, I mean, that's just the cost of doing business, we all understand that, especially if you're working on government jobs. And dealing with prevailing, uh, prevailing wages, um, but I don't think we should be, I mean, that's pretty strong, opposes any legislation. Um, you know, those are family wage jobs, in my opinion, we should have more of those, you know, when we're making those investments in our community from a public work standpoint. And those are good paying jobs that a lot of people, um, provide, you know, for their families on, so I, I just feel like that's really strong. Um, and then also in regards to the, like, annexation, um, and under land use. I really do think we, we need to really have a conversation. In, with this council in regards to, uh, these donut holes and we're annexing their properties. Because these individuals choose those areas for like a rural lifestyle and I feel like we're impeding on them. Um, I understand we need housing and I, it looks like we're for making it easier in a sense, but. If we, you know, we just had an issue with a subdevelopment called the Guardian's Nest, I believe, um, and we had a lot of people upset about that because. You know, they, they kinda live in the, it's in the county area, um, and now they're gonna have multiple, um, you know. Fourplexes and things like that, and they don't really want that in their community, and so I really do think we need to just take a step back and really reevaluate a lot of these things. As a council before we start just signing off on stuff, cuz I mean, there was a couple of things that I just didn't agree with. I mean, I don't agree with electrical vehicle charging standards, I don't feel like, I feel like honestly, that's a waste of time on that one. Um, unless there's more subsidies from the federal government, um, so those are my comments, I don't wanna hijack this, but. I really do think we need to just really look at this before we sign off on it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, if I may clarify, so the support oppose monitor list isn't really direction for the interim. Um, you would revisit that list when you adopt the twenty twenty five legislative agenda. Because it is something that tends to carry over year to year, I wanted to make sure you all are seeing it and are able to provide the level of input that. And feedback that you just provided, but the direction that's really being given to me for the coming months is on the. On the, um, interim action plan, not on the support oppose monitor document.
Thank you, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and I appreciate Councilmember Prowl bringing up the annexation, that's something we haven't really talked about as a council and. We've had a lot of other things on our plate, but yeah, that would be a great discussion for us to have down the road, but I want to tell you. Um, really, as far as I see it, this is excellent, go get it done, yeah, get as much of this as you can. Um, you know, of course, I, I love the infrastructure, you know, the Road Seventy Six, the Eighth Street, yes, um. You know, our, our partners here, um, you know, staff put in their proposals to BF COG by the deadline and we're gonna push hard for. Those two and like you're saying, hit it from as many avenues as we can, but, you know, all of this, especially one of the ones that sticks out to me the most is the unfended mandates where. You know, whether it be public defense or just even, yes, this conversion over to electric, also like. Councilmember Prowl was speaking about, because everybody I talked to in the business says the grid can't support it. I mean, up in North Franklin County, they, they got an alert that they were looking at brownouts a week or two ago, that they were gonna be without power for a few hours. They ended up backing off of that and they didn't have to do that, but, man, it's already so tight and we wanna add that to it, it's really, um. Not sure how we get there, so anyways, I like the list, it's good, yeah, there's probably a couple of things that could be tweaked, but, yeah, go get as much of it as you done. Is possible that you can get done, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing, seeing none, thank you, Brianna, do we have any, um, again, we've got our limitations here, but do we have any? Comment from, uh, public, members of the public? Going once. Going twice. Third time's a charm, we'll move on to item B, which is targeted urban. Targeted urban area tax exemption program. Mr. McFadden, good to see you again.
How are you? So the cover almost looks identical, it is identical except for a few words from the presentation earlier this year, we wanted to get back in front of you. There was some enthusiasm about the concept of targeted urban area tax exemptions. To attract, uh, investment from manufacturing companies, so we wanted to let you know. What work has been done and also provided discussion around what's the process to get from. That original presentation to your data implement, the Tua, if you choose. So, really quick refresher, chapter eighty four point two five, the RCW. Uh, established the targeted urban areas exemption, uh, went into effect July first of twenty twenty two. And the idea is that we could capture new manufacturing investment on our industrial zone ground. That may choose to go to another state if it wasn't for some form of an incentive and as I mentioned previously, the state of Washington. Its constitution is pretty restrictive around incentives for industry and. We compete against states all over the nation who write checks and buy land and. Provide property tax exemptions and sales tax exemptions every day, so we lose projects there. This is a great new tool, it is very new, um, we haven't worked all the bugs out of it either. But I think what's important is, this is an opportunity to take the ground that you have already zoned for industrial. And be able to do direct recruitment and attraction that results in projects that we likely otherwise would not get. So, in order for this to go through, the company has to meet some criteria, they have to certify. That they wouldn't build in Washington or Pasco if it wasn't for this particular property tax exemption. They have to certify the project creates a minimum of twenty five new living wage jobs, which in Washington state is above twenty three dollars an hour. That those employees would work two thousand and eighty hours per year at a minimum and receive healthcare benefits. The developer would need to construct a minimum of ten thousand square feet, uh, manufacturing improvements. Uh, the project must be a new building, not an addition. And then the minimum improvement value is eight hundred thousand dollars for uses categorized as manufacturing or transportation and. That is an interesting item that as we come across that transportation still has to have a manufacturing component in it. In order for it to be considered eligible for the tax exemption. What's the benefit to the manufacturer, once their project. Is accepted by the city council and issued a temporary certificate and they complete their construction. And have their certificate of occupancy, they can have ten years of the city's portion of property tax revenue exempted. The exemption does not include the value of the land nor any non-industrial. Non-manufacturing related improvements such as admin offices and the exemption doesn't apply. To county property taxes or school district share property taxes, it only applies to the city's portion. Of new property taxes and the land property taxes will continue to be collected as is normal. And then benefits to the community, good jobs, private investment, construction, sales tax revenue. Future increases in property tax revenue and no loss of existing revenues that were already coming to the municipality. Here's the next steps, this is where really the update comes in. The city ne- needs to identify the eligible lands. Those grounds must be already in the city limits and zoned for industrial manufacturing uses. You need to determine that there is a benefit, so the city council would confirm that, that a Tua will assist. In the new construction and attraction of those manufacturing businesses and will provide those wages. You would adopt a preliminary resolution that expresses the city's intent to designate a specific area as a Tua. Follow that with a public hearing to take public comment on the support or the opposition for the map as presented. And then you would need after that hearing to make a decision as a council whether you would modify the map. Adopt the map as presented or choose to not move forward with the project. The ultimate city council action is the creation of the Pasco targeted urban area and that does require council action. And as you'll see, the approval of any project requires council action as well before it moves forward. So, I brought you the steps from the city of Richland, it seems to me like they've. Had to do some pioneering here, they've investigated the process, this is exactly what they're currently working in. So you have a developer who wants to build a manufacturing facility and invest in Pasco, they have to come and complete. The city of Pasco's application to participate in this program. Staff would review that, uh, within ninety days, it would need to come before this body. For your opportunity to review and act with an up or down vote, whether you support or you oppose this particular project being allowed to use the Tua. Then there's a, a contracting phase where a conditional certificate of acceptance of the tax exemption is issued by the city to the project. That's shared, city administration sent on to the county. For instance, the county assessor needs to be in the loop on each of these transactions and needs to be dutifully notified. Completion of the project construction, so thirty days to audit that the developer's project was completed. As it was described and as it was approved by council. The developer would come to the city and make a presentation, an owner's statement. And would also have secured the certificate of occupancy from the city. The way the law is currently written, that project needs to be built in a thirty six month period of time. There is a line in the state law that allows up to twenty four month extension. But the developer would need to have demonstrated good faith progress, essentially, you'd wanna see that the building's out of the ground. Most of the way done, advancing as described, and you would take a separate action if you were to give an extension. During that entire period of time, they have to pay the incremental new property taxes that occur each year. Because the assessor goes out every summer on a project that's under construction and value it, values it. Based on the progress of construction, the actual property tax exemption doesn't incur until January first. After the certificate of occupancy has been issued and after the city has approved the developer's final report. Annually, the city has to report on these projects. And they have to provide some of that reporting to the Washington State Department of Commerce, which is a way to track and report to the state legislature. Whether or not this bill and this tool is actually working effectively. Currently, this bill's on the books until twenty thirty, that's a trial period for. Cities to put this into place, counties to choose to partner, developers to build projects and, and prove that. It actually works and it's resulted in investment we wouldn't have otherwise received. Couple of technical fixes that are a little clear as mud, but. As Richmond's been going through this process, they found a couple of clerical things that need to be addressed. And they found a couple of things that are in conflict between the way the State Department of Revenue looks at the situation. And the way a county assessor may look at the situation and, and that creates an opportunity for thirty nine county assessors in the. State of Washington to have individual interpretations, so. The city of Richland actually was meeting earlier today with Department of Revenue and I don't know the status of that conversation, but. We'll hear from them later this week, but they were proposing that DOR make some technical. Administrative fixes to the current bill, if not, just like what we've had with the tax increment financing bill. Almost each legislative session since TIF went into place, there's been housekeeping that's gone all the way to the legislature. For approval, um, by the House and the Senate. Um, this is a relatively new state law and so I just wanna say, that housekeeping is likely going to continue. Over a period of years as we try this out, maybe all the way up until the twenty thirty e- expiration point, which is a moment where. Uh, the state legislator's gonna have to decide, yep, this is a great. uh, the state legislator is going to have to decide, yep, this is a great program. We're going to continue to use it or no, it's not. And really, that's where I'm at um in terms of the next steps and the technical pieces. We have drafted, um staff has drafted a resolution for legal to look at and admin to work their way through so that when it's time to bring that to you for a first draft from your consideration. Ultimately, that resolution and a conversation about the map. And then holding that public hearing are going to be really, you know, some key steps. And I think, I guess I don't have the map here in the presentation. Um, is there a way that we can get that?
I would say that uh, the map is included in the
It isn't, it isn't.
It is included in the staff report, so you will see that in your council.
So I can address the map without us looking at it. The map that you're looking at highlights the three industrially zoned parcels inside the city limits of Pasco. So I one, I two, and I three, I three being heavy industrial. And the question that's going to come before you is do we include all of the industrial ground? Or do we include a portion of it? And the real key here is the TUA area has to be contiguous. You can have freeways and bridges and, and things running, you know, separating parcels that are zoned industrial. But as long as there's industrial on this side of the road and industrial on that side of the road, it would be considered contiguous. So for instance, the port of Pasco has weighed in on this because the only heavy industrial zone inside the entire city limits of Pasco is big Pasco industrial center down on Ainsworth along the river. We have some land available there. It's actually in our port strategic plan that suggests that that land should be used for heavy manufacturing that may not be able to occur anywhere else in the industrial zones in the city. So we've recommended finding a path to include that in the TUA when the time comes. Additionally, the airport is entirely zoned under I one. And if we choose to move forward with the AM Center, the Aerospace Innovation and Manufacturing Center, we would love that four hundred and fifty acres to be included in the TUA because we think when it comes to establishing aerospace here, we're going to need all the tools that we can get. So that's the part, part of this, the PR and the commercials from our office. But really, I think it's a good program. Certainly, it's got a few little ticks and a typo or two that need to be worked out, but I think it's a good project for us to continue to move forward in terms of the goal of making Pasco competitive, certainly with our neighbors across the river and with a number of other states that we're always in a horse race with.
Excellent. Thank, thank you for that. I see you, Mr. Proust. You got your light on.
Thank you. I only had two questions. Um, I'm kind of a knucklehead sometimes. And so I want to know about the tax part portion. So, so essentially these businesses aren't going to pay any property tax.
The only portion of their annual property tax bill that they won't pay is the city of Pasco portion
Okay.
on the new construction of a manufacturing.
So you'll still get taxes. Little, so the tiny little bit, okay.
And the county will still get its little tiny bit. The junior taxing districts will get their piece. Uh, the school district will get all of what they would normally receive.
So just city, okay. And then
And I, and I didn't mention this earlier, councilman, but Franklin County would have an opportunity to opt in if it wanted to. So on across the river in Richland, Benton County adopted the exact same TUA map that the city of Richland had adopted. They took the city's resolution and modified it for the county to use. They took the city's application and their timeline and their process, and they adopted all of that and implemented it, which gives that overall recruitment process just that much more horsepower.
I appreciate that. Does the city of Richland administer a review fee for the application and stuff like that? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it looks like uh, I've got, I'll go to Mr. Harpston and Mr. Grimm.
Thanks. A couple of questions for you, Mr. McFadden. Would there be a moratorium on a piece of land being able to apply for this exemption that was recently re- rezoned to industrial? So for example, if, if I rezoned my parcel to industrial, the next day, would it qualify for this theoretically speaking?
If, if it's inside the boundary that you approve, it would qualify. Here's the other answer to that. Say you have some ground that's zoned industrial that's in the UGA. And it's not in, not annexed into the city, but in the UGA. In Richland, what they chose to do is they put their TUA in place and then they ran an annexation process and added quite a bit of acreage to the city limits. And then they put that into the TUA with a resolution, amendment to their res- original resolution. If you take it a step further, um, the port has a hundred and sixty four acres at the Ryman Industrial Center that lies in an unincorporated area of Franklin County. It's not in the city limits, it's not in the UGA. It's not eligible to be in the TUA. But if you do a UGA expansion in the future and the port seeks to have that added and that occurs, that we would move to annex the ground into the city so it could be added to the TUA.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, and then lastly, can two parcels abut in each other owned by two different property owners both apply for and theoretically receive the exemption? Are there any limits to contiguous parcels owned by different folks?
Are you speaking to the landowners?
Yeah.
Apply? So it wouldn't actually be the landowners that would be applying unless a developer that's going to build a manufacturing facility has purchased that ground. And typically, we would see them create a single parcel. But it's the actual builder of the manufacturing facility that would be the applicant to the city of Pasco, not the landowner. So it won't matter how many landowners are involved.
Yeah, and that could occur though on parcels abutting each other correctly or correct?
If they chose not to do a boundary line adjustment, yes, but from the port's perspective, anytime we buy ground, we tend to do a boundary line adjustment. Or a lot segregation.
Thank you, Mr. Harpston and Mr. Grimm.
Thank you. Just a general comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McFadden, for the excellent presentation, coming back and seeing us. I appreciate staff working with you and putting this together. I'm excited about this. I look at the top ten states for business incentive programs and those are all known to be very business friendly states. And I would love to be more competitive with them. I would love to see more of those kind of jobs in our area and the growth. I see this as a very small term sacrifice for a long term gain. So I really appreciate you working with staff and staff working with you to try to put this together. So thank you.
Happy to do that. It's a tool that I would really like to have in my toolbox. Thank you.
I see no further lights on and I'll just kind of echo the sentiment. I think there's a, you know, obviously there are kinks, as you mentioned, some typos, as you call them. Uh, some, some issues that have to be worked through, but I think generally, we've heard the success that uh, Richland's had with this tool. We've obviously had ours with our tax increment financing to help with development on Broadmore. And I understand that's not apples to apples, but these are legislative tools to incentivize growth. And that's the mode that the city of Pasco is in. So until we decide that that's not where we want to go with the city of Pasco, that's certainly an opportunity to bring in, as you mentioned, wage paying jobs. I mean, that's, that's the critical. If, if we're going to grow, we certainly need those. So um, I'm supportive of this tool and uh, hopefully we can kind of move the ball down the road.
And it actually creates, Mr. Mayor, a situation where you have two tools that you likely would never use or be able to use simultaneously, but you have the TIFF. And you could choose to use the TIFF, or you could choose to use the TUA, which goes directly to landing the company that you wouldn't land. So um, it's just nice to have extra opportunities and extra ways of getting there.
Well, excellent. Thank you for your time. I'll, at this point, we'll move on to um, public comment. Do we have any public comment on this presentation? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right, there's no public comment on item B. We are moving on to item C, presentation. Court Street and Road ninety six, traffic calming measures. And it looks like Director Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For this presentation related to traffic calming measures proposed to be implemented in Court Street corridor and Road ninety six corridor, we will have a presentation from traffic engineer Sean Messner with CivTech. He will present the results of the evaluation that we have done for the city, but specifically focusing on these two corridors, which uh, you have heard from me before in May. Uh, he will just revisit those to refresh everybody on what the findings were. And we have actually revisited or revised uh, the implementation measures to be um, proposed tonight uh, to accommodate some of the comments we receive and address some of the cost of that proposal. And uh, today, tonight's goal is to receive from you all uh, direction on um, the implementation, whether you concur with what we're proposing or should we look into uh, it further. So with that, I will let Sean Messner take it from here.
Thank you, Maria. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Sean Messner with CivTech. Um, is everybody hearing me okay? Is there a weird echo going on?
We're good from our end.
Perfect. Um, I'd like to uh, go through the presentation with you all. Thank you for entertaining me uh, doing this electronically. Um, there's a lot of slides on this uh, slide deck, but I wanted to make sure you had all of the information uh, that we looked at. Kind of try to go through these as quickly as possible and look definitely entertain questions at the end. Uh, happy to explain more in detail about each of these. And I'm going to turn my camera off just to save bandwidth for everybody and um, the slides are much better looking than myself. So uh, with that said, uh, I would like to go through uh, Court Street and Road ninety six, the speed evaluations and uh, talk through what we did and uh, some of the modifications that Ms. Sarah uh, just talked about. So as part of the study process, we go through and look at uh, a lot of data collection. It's primarily existing conditions, but we also look at future um, plans, like the comprehensive plan and multimodal uh, plans for uh, how to incorporate things in the future. Um, we then draw conclusions and recommendations and um, really importantly, we use a lot of national um, guides to help guide us through this process. So there's a list of acronyms there at the bottom, but these are all national resources that we use. Um, go ahead. You're right on time. Thank you. Uh, some of the data collection that we do, I won't go through all of this, but um, primarily roadside features, roadway data like uh, where pedestrian crossings or bicycle facilities are, vertical and horizontal curves. And then we collect a ton of traffic data, including speeds, classifications and volumes. Go to the next one. In general, the way that we, uh, there's some key aspects to the speed data that we really hone in on uh, for locations that have um, not a lot of driveways. We look at typical eighty fifth percentile speeds. That is the speed at which eighty five percent of the overall traffic on the roadway is going at or below. Um, we typically want the speed limit to be uh, within that or near that eighty fifth percentile speed and within the ten mile an hour pace speed. Ten mile an hour pace speed is the speed at which the majority of traffic on the roadway is traveling at within a ten mile an hour pace speed. So uh, the ideal situation would be we'd have a thirty mile an hour posted roadway and the ten mile an hour pace speed would be uh, somewhere between twenty five and thirty five. Um, that would be ideal for um, that type of a roadway. Uh, we're places where we have high conflicts, like a lot of driveways. Um, we then look at the fiftieth percentile speed and uh, we try to combine the efforts of the eighty fifth percentile and the fiftieth percentile and take a look at what's most appropriate for the the type of roadway, including the roadside data that's there, number of driveways, bike and ped facilities, shoulder widths, things of that nature. And again, this is all found within those national uh, resources that, that I've talked about or at least listed there. Go to the next one. So for Court Street, um, overall, as part of a much bigger city project, we've looked at sixteen segments within the city limits. Um, tonight, I'd like to focus in on these five segments that have these large yellow stars primarily from Road eighty four on the east to Road one eleven on the west. Um, at Road one hundred, uh, the roadway is kind of split up into classification. So what, west of Road one hundred, it's an arterial street. And then east of Road one hundred, it's classified as an arterial. I'm sorry, west of Road one hundred, a collector, east of Road one hundred, an arterial. Um, west of Road one hundred, the speed limit is thirty miles per hour. Um, the eighty fifth percentile speed was around thirty three and the fiftieth percentile speed was around twenty eight. East of Road one hundred, it's an arterial classification with a forty mile an hour posted speed limit. And the data that we had suggested or noted that the traffic was eighty fifth percentile speeds were about forty three miles per hour and the fiftieth percentiles were around thirty eight. I'm going to go to the next one, please. Um, this fly pen, it reiterates the number of conflict points. We, we use, we call conflict points driveways or, or intersections. The collector segment has much higher number of driveways. Um, there's a few more intersections along that section west of Road one hundred. Um, east of Road one hundred, it's more of a, a minor arterial in the sense that there's less driveways, um, less intersections. There's more, um, there, there's just less driveways in general to residential units that front the arterial roadway. And so the, the red indicates something that's of concern. If it's higher, uh, the number of conflict points, there's more potential for crashes and more potential for turns to and from the roadway. Go to the next one, please. Uh, we also look at crash data. So um, for Court Street, uh, over the last five years, appeared there was one fatal in um, crash at Road eighty eight. Uh, there were two serious crashes um, west of Road one eighty eight uh, at Road one oh eight and uh, just immediately west thereof, Road eighty eight itself. Um, many of them non-injury crashes happened at the intersections. Uh, and that's really the same way with Road ninety six. There weren't a lot of crashes along Road ninety six. Um, and these are, I want to reiterate, these are reported crashes. They're not close calls or crashes that occurred where uh, insurance information was exchanged, but the police weren't called. These were all uh, crashes where police have been called and there's a report to file that we can take a look at. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so we take all of that and there's a lot of data, uh, a ton of data that we collect. Um, but we, we really boil it down into um, some of this information that's here where um, for Court Street, west of Road one hundred, it's a thirty mile an hour posted speed limit, but there are a high number of driveways. Eighty fifth percentile speed is thirty three, the fiftieth percentile is twenty eight. The pace speed is right centered around the, the thirty mile per hour um, posted speed limit. Because Court is at an angle, some of the intersections might have a sight distance issue and we want to take a closer look at those as we move forward. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, to the east of Road one hundred, uh, it's a minor arterial. It's a forty mile an hour posted speed limit, but the number of driveways are lower. Um, the eighty fifth and fiftieth percentile speeds are slightly higher than the west segment. Um, the posted speed limit still falls within the range of the eighty fifth percentile and the ten mile an hour pace speed. Again, there are some sight distance issues that we, do you want to take a closer look at it, the intersections and the fatal crash at Road eighty eight? We do want to investigate that a little bit further. We can go to the next slide, please. So some of the recommendations, um, I know Ms. Sarah had provided a, a, a very similar presentation and plans um, recommending different infrastructure improvements along Court. And we took another look at that through some of the public input that we've received uh, and decided that it might be best to split this up into two phases for Court Street. Uh, phase one would to be maintaining the thirty mile an hour posted speed limit, adding additional signs uh, at the crosswalk or the, the trail crossing that's at the very west end, near the, the inner uh, interstate. We'd want to upgrade that signing uh, to make it more M E T C compliant. Now we do want to install a double yellow striping. Um, the thirty mile an hour posted speed limit, I hope people aren't trying to pass people. That would help uh, give officers something to enforce. And it'll make the lanes feel a little bit more narrow, which will help with traffic calming. And we'd also like to install radar feedback signs, both eastbound and westbound. Those final locations are still being reviewed, but uh, essentially we want to try to catch uh, the driver's eye as they enter into the different Uh, the driver's eye as they enter into the different uh roadside area of this section of court. So immediately west of Road one hundred is where we have more driveways. As we get closer, we're at the very west end, near Road one eleven. Uh, and actually east or west of Road one oh eight is where we start to see more density and residential units along the roadway. So we'd like to try to catch as many people coming into that uh area as possible. Um, we'd like to install that and then come back at a later time to do a follow-up feed uh speed study. Uh, where we go back out and collect the speed data at the same locations and see how the how those enhancements. Helped, or maybe it doesn't help, uh but we want to take a look at that to uh before installing. The next stage, which would be uh lane narrowing devices such as uh center islands and chicanes. So we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so those center islands would look similar to the bottom left photo where. Uh, they would not be concrete. They would be more temporary in nature in the sense that they're. Um, what we call candlesticks. They're typically drilled into the pavement. Uh, they would shape more of an eyeball type looking shape, but as you're approaching it from the vehicle's perspective, they're an obstacle in the roadway. Um, there's something that you want to slow down to make sure you get around it safely. Um, and so we we use these to deflect traffic so that it's not such a straight roadway. There's actually a little bit of movement. Um, laterally that the vehicles have to make and that typically slows them down along with narrowing the lanes. The center photo is more of a chican, uh where we put those on the sides, very much like what the photo is. And then, of course, the radar feedback signs, which I think. Everyone has seen. Good next slide, thanks. Um, so on the west end, I'm sorry, the east end of the project, so east of Road one hundred, we have the trail crossing. But the speed limit is forty currently. We'd like to extend the thirty mile an hour posted speed limit east of this location so that the trail crossing is uh happens within a thirty mile an hour. Posted speed limit. We'd also like to enhance that trail crossing with signing um to make sure that it's more compliant with M U T C D. And um after that or to the east of that, then increase the speed back to forty. Uh, we'd install the double yellow striping and again install additional speed limit signs. There was really no changes to the phasing. Um, east of Road one hundred. We can go to the next slide, please. So the next few slides, um you've seen these plans before. They're they're all very much the same. Just highlighting the. Uh, with the weird cloud shapes, the portions of the infrastructure uh that we're suggesting uh be moved to phase two. Uh, so this would be the center islands and the chicanes. We could go to the next slide, please. Um, all of these, uh the the larger uh clouds are the center islands, the smaller ones are the the chicanes that would be on the side. So we'd like to move all of those to phase two. And again, at that location where the um maybe small picture is, uh that's where we would have at least uh one of the radar feedback signs. And that would be for the the westbound traffic. Uh, next slide, please. Same thing with this one, just highlighting the areas where we go to the next phase. Go on to the next slide, please. And then here, there's really no change from what you've seen. We still want to install the trail crossing signs uh there at the at the freeway crossing. And next slide, please. So for Road ninety-six, um, we did look at three segments uh between Schuman and Bowflor. Um, these segments north of Court had some pretty high speeds. It's a posted speed limit of twenty-five. It's a residential roadway and um the eighty-fifth percentile speeds were. Uh, thirty-nine and thirty-four. So the thirty-four was at the north segment. The thirty-nine is right there in the middle. Um, again, the posted speed limit is twenty-five, so a lot of people are going pretty quick on these uh these segments of roadway. Uh, the fiftieth percentile speeds were all above thirty as well. And so. Um, or very close to thirty for the north section. And there's a lot of driveways. If we could go to the next slide, please. Um, again, a local residential roadway, um, the conflicts per mile is over sixty. So uh. As a typical residential roadway, we'd have expect a high number of uh conflict points and we want to try to minimize the conflict. Points with high speeds. We could go to the next slide, please. So we looked at all of that data as well. Again, most of the crashes were just at the intersections. There wasn't a whole lot. Uh, in between the segments, which is very nice. I'm very happy to have that. Uh, but north of Argent Road, um posted speed limit, we're recommending to stay the same. It's twenty-five. The fiftieth percentile speed is twenty-eight, whereas the eighty-fifth is thirty-four. Um, the posted speed limit is outside the ten mile an hour pace speed, indicating that a lot of traffic is traveling much faster than the the posted speed. Go to the next slide, please. Um, south of Argent Road, um really between Court and Argent, uh same posted speed limit. Uh, this section of roadway is actually a little bit more narrow than the north section. It ranges from nineteen to twenty-four feet. Uh, not very wide at all. Uh, there's high number of conflict points. The speeds are are pretty high here. Posted speed limit of twenty-five, but the ten mile an hour pace speed is thirty-one to forty. Indicating uh people travel this much faster than what the posted speed the limit is. We can go to the next slide, please. Um, the recommendations here are split up into two uh sections again, north of Argent Road. Uh, where it's a little bit wider, immediately north of Argent, we want to install a center island to help narrow the lanes up there. Uh, keep the speed limit twenty-five, install some double yellow striping, and then there's uh three sections where we want to install. Uh, speed cushions. Um, and if you go to the next slide, there's a picture of speed cushions at the bottom. Uh, these speed cushions are much like speed tables, but they're split up so that fire trucks and larger vehicles can. Essentially straddle them and not have impacts to their shocks or springs. Um, south of Argent Road, uh you might remember me saying the road was very narrow. There's really no room to narrow the lanes up. Because the road itself is narrow by itself. Um, we want to install uh these speed cushions at two locations. Um, it would also be accompanied by the the speed hump warning signs so that people that are traveling down that road. Um, they'll be at least uh warned ahead of time that there is something that will cause a bump if they're traveling it. We can go to the next slide, please. Um, so the next few slides are really just the same plans that you've seen before. Uh, this section or this sheet here shows. The approximate locations between Court and Argent where the speed humps would or the speed cushions would go. If we can go to the next slide, please. Um, this shows the center island that uh would be near Sarah Drive uh just south of that. And then two of the speed cushion locations uh moving north. And then the next slide has the third location. Uh, that shows the speed cushions being installed just south of Bowflor. Um, so there were no changes. The recommendations here, we still feel very strongly that that's needed to reduce the speeds along. Uh, Road ninety-six. And if we go to the next slide, tried to go through those as quick as I can. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation and thank you for uh keeping it as as quick as possible. Looks like Mr. Melony does have a question or comment or questions or comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, as you know, I live in this district and uh I do appreciate a lot of my neighbors coming out. I do recognize most of you guys. So thank you. Um, I know, again, we've gone over this on the speed limit. I know it's or, you know, more of a a drive-through. I I. Do disagree that maybe it should be, I mean, if on Road ninety-six, they're going high speed and twenty-five should be the limit. I I still. Am of the opinion that maybe we should reduce to the west of uh Road one hundred as I'm on Court to twenty-five. But my other question besides stating the twenty-five miles an hour is, why isn't there speed cushions like on that part of. Court Street? I mean, most of the people I would say are going the speed limit, but it's the racers that you occasionally hear once, you know, every so often, every week. You know, you hear a racer going down and they're doing eighty, ninety, at least sixty. I mean, I could hear him just wow, I'm going by. Why wouldn't you put speed cushions on there versus the the poles and all the other speed reducing things, which would make the area. Not as attractive. I mean, I think when you go down Court Street past Road one hundred, just gorgeous, seeing all the houses, the rivers. But if you have these big area, you know. However you want to word it. And I, to me, it just doesn't look that pretty. I don't understand why we don't have speed cushions that can be taken out in the winter. I know. There's a part with, you know, plowing the roads. And then also, I know the the big thing has been with the fire department, being able to go over those. Without having to recalibrate the ladder. Why wouldn't we put that on on there to stop the speeders? Most people, again, I believe are pretty much going the speed limit. Can you give any insight to that?
Um, I can. So it's um, it's not a very straightforward answer, but I'll provide the answers and hopefully that will spur up questions perhaps. Um, a lot of times with where we see speed humps or speed cushions or speed tables are typically on residential roadways. Um, we don't see them a lot on arterials or collector roadways unless there are a high number of concentrated pedestrians crossing. So um, we're in Road ninety-six is a local roadway. Um, and due to some of the width constraints. Um, that's why we recommended those there. Uh, for Court Street, it's not only um a collector road. Um, that has the future classification of our arterial. There are sections of of court that are quite wide. For parking. Um, there's also a bike lane that's there. And so when you install speed cushions within the lanes, you typically don't install them. Uh, across that or over to the curb. You try to keep them within the lane criteria where the traveling uh vehicles are going. Um, but that leaves a gap on either side. And so uh there are studies out there that suggest that by doing that, you're actually creating. An obstacle that people will go completely around. And it it's it's because it's really wide is the reason why.
Okay, I. Do appreciate the the comment. I don't, I just, I guess also, can you, I know we've talked about uh. The roundabout at Road one hundred in Court. I know is, or maybe this is a question for the city manager, but. Um, is that gonna be pushed further up? I mean, are we still planning on doing the roundabout? Cause obviously a roundabout would cause. I've seen on traffic plan studies that a roundabout was gonna eventually be put, obviously the sixty-eight in court is first. But I did see on a plan that Road one hundred in Court because of the two lanes eventually going north on Road one hundred. Is that still in the works? Because that would be a huge thing as well to calm people from racing on uh Court Street.
So that project is not part of the six-year D I P? Um, I don't, I don't have a memory of it being in the T S and P, but I can go back and check. Uh, but it's not in that six-year plan at this time.
Okay, I didn't know if maybe since we're trying to calm it down, if this, I would appreciate if you could give me an update on that. Um, and then I guess what my other option would be, you know, when we have, you know, sometimes you see on roads where they actually have like painted lines to try to. As far as on the eye, it causes people to assume that there's like a bump. I know it's not the greatest thing, but you could have it where. You know, as far as if you're driving it, then cause the person to slow down because it's a, you know, virtual. Has that been analyzed on that to try to slow people down or is that uh where where are your thoughts on those?
Yeah, I honestly, I did not look at that. Uh, and the reason I didn't look at that is because Court is so straight. Um, there's very little deflection in courts until you um, until you get further to the east. Um, so no, I did not look at um some of the stop bars or some of the lines that are painted. Um, they're typically installed with. Um. Some of the the noisy items, like you start to get closer to a stop sign. I'm losing uh what the name of them are right now, but I do know what you're talking about. I did not look at or analyze to see if those would be appropriate.
Okay, well, let's see if there's any other questions. I do appreciate it. Um, I do think more can be done. Um, I do want to reinstate the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. I mean, again, when we're talking about having a a bike path and people going, if you actually go down there. Anytime in eight, nine in the morning, you see quite a lot of people that are using our bike path. And so I just think, I know it's, you're talking. Uh, connector street, but. I don't, I mean, again, you just need to consider that we do have a bike path and there is a lot of people on there. I don't think five mile an hour. Five mile an hour is gonna kill us if we lower it. Um, so that's my comments. Hopefully we get to come to agreement on that.
Thank you, Mr. Melony, Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not sentiment. Yeah, I I agree with Mayor Portem, Melony. Um, I guess this is a question for staff. Maybe perhaps Mr. Ferguson, as city council, do we, we have broad authority over many. Things in our city, right? Would speed limits be one of them?
Absolutely.
So we we could make it twenty-five if we wanted.
Uh, there's a process, a very strict process for that. And I'm I'm not uh um the expert on it, but yeah, there's a process that that we've gone through. Uh, several times where there's been amendments, but they have to be based on uh studies and and a lot of uh data that goes into that. And again, I don't want to talk out of school, but yeah.
So then who 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 reviews the da- the data?
Uh, Public Works Department historically has been involved with uh understanding what the traffic counts are and what the the.
Is there any check on that? I mean, I'm I'm just, I'm trying to get out of, could the city council just make it twenty-five regardless of the review and the recommendations? I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Certainly, it can be, I I believe it can be done. There is a. Attached to it. If we do that against the recommendation of uh, say, the study has been done. It's found not to be the recommended speed. Um, I believe there is some exposure with doing that. But but it is within the power.
Or going too slow? There's some, you said there's some exposure to.
It, yeah.
Like risk or something? I don't know. I I would like for, like for where I live, Road forty-four, you go up Road forty-four, it's twenty-five. Take a left in Madison, it's thirty-five. I'm like. Well, I guess my neighborhood, no one cares about my neighborhood, I guess. I don't know. Um, but I just think there's some of these streets that we should go down to twenty-five. I think we do have a speeding problem. And so, I mean, if it's on our, if it's within our authority, I say we should exercise it. That, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls. Do we have any? Before I get back to Mr. Melony, I see no further lights from the council, Mr. Melony.
Yeah, getting asked a question for staff. So if we have the power, would it help? I mean, again, I know myself, of course. Mr. Harbster attended some of the meeting or one of the meetings. Uh, obviously, he represents the whole city. But like if we had the different constituents that are living along Court Street, if they were to put like a. You know, some kind of initial, or you know, signing thing, would that like, would that help? You know, if all, everybody along Court Street. From Road one hundred uh as a west. I know you said there's studies and sometimes it seems like the city wants to do what they want to do, but. We live there. So I'm just saying, if we put like an initiative to get so that the council knows that everybody is in agreement with that, would that. Be something that would help or not help or?
The the study is literally looking at the the cars that are going down there and checking their speed. So not like a. It's not an opinion-based study.
Okay, no, no, that's not what I meant. No, I meant like, you know, when you go along and you get signatures and you talk to your neighbors and say, hey.
It sounds like it's up to council. If you want to just change the speed limit, you 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 could go ahead and do that. I I I think I'd I'd be hesitant to get overly prescriptive on some of the other changes that your engineering teams suggesting. And and the the way that you put them in because they study it for a living and and. I I think that I'm, I'm just more cautious that way, but if the speed limit's something that's an easy change, I I agree with Mr. Prowls that. Lowering the speed limit, I don't think, I think it'd be more if you wanted to raise it to fifty on a twenty-five, that would be where you'd want to be cautious as. Representatives of the city, but lowering it down, I I don't believe is gonna yield the same risk as as going the opposite way. Uh, as far as the actual changes for uh speed cushions and things like that, I think there is more exposure because the gentleman is talking about the the width of the road. Um, and given there is a bike lane, I think he's saying that the cars are gonna be more apt to try and veer into the bike lane potentially.
Okay, I I understand that. I guess my point, sometimes you just want something more done because I think I've told you, I've. Almost got nailed because people racing and you're on a bike, your life is already on the line. So when you miss somebody by inches because they don't give a crap and they're flying down, it uh puts a little more emphasis on your life. When you realize that just because somebody's trying to race. So and I know if, you know, walk the dog and you see people going fast. And we live there, it it means a lot more. So I'm saying, I would like to hopefully have the council to do what we can to. Lower down if we want to send what we feel about it, but I'm a hundred percent for lowering down to twenty-five, whatever we could do to try to save a life and. What we feel about it, but I'm a hundred percent for lowering down to twenty five, whatever we could do to try to save a life and.
Yeah, I think rather than having anyone from the neighborhood have to weigh in, as as long as there's enough folks from the the DAS that are interested in changing that, that's probably the easiest way to. To make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, with that, Miss Blaisdell.
Um, the only comment that I wanna say to that is I live next to Pasco High. And I have a pretty low speed limit. And if people are gonna race, they're gonna race. They don't care if there's kids outside or not. Um, and I'm gonna just say that when that happens. You call and report it and I've had a, I guess I've had. Pasco police come and monitor it over and over and then it slows down. So. Um, if you see it, call it in.
Thank you, Miss Blaisdell, Miss Prowls.
Thank you. Um, I I wanna add to that. I mean, I I understand there's been. A lot of issues going on because of the road is just, it looks like it's set up to be a raceway. Um, I I driven out there, I I've, you know, I've been whizzed by from someone. Because I'm driving speed limit and they just go around me, right? Uh, so I understand the situation. I do agree that speed limit must be, should be lowered. But I also am concerned and I agree with uh, uh, Miss Blaisdell here. Um, I also live in a street that's kind of on a cul-de-sac. People just race by. My camera can't even capture them because they're going by so fast. There's kids all over the area. It's it's hard to to capture. Um, and and you know, holding people accountable, right? So in addition, my suggestion would be in addition to changing the speed limit, we should look also into other uh, features that would help. Um, mitigate uh, the the speeding because you know, like Melissa said. You're gonna lower the speed limit, people are not gonna abide by that anyway. And so what else can we do? Is it striping like you said, um, David? Is it striping that will, you know, just. Deter people from speeding up, these really low cars that are out there, maybe adding um, speed bumps. Uh, I I I agree, again, I agree with lowering the speed limit, but I also agree with adding other features. That would deter those that are not gonna lower their speed limit.
Thank you, Miss Prowls, Mister Grim.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'll be brief. Yes, I think we see it, you know, this kind of behavior, just even at red lights. I think we all witnessed more people going late through red lights than we've ever seen in my time driving. And so I think this is, you know, just a larger issue than we have at, um, you know, this one road or two roads in this one. Part of town, but at the same point, uh, Mister Mayor, I would be for lowering the speed limit. On Court to twenty five west of one hundred and keeping the other recommendations intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess I may be one of the few alone dissenting. I'm not convinced that lowering the speed limit's gonna achieve what we want. Um, I think we're gonna see just risk of more enforcement, it's gonna take resources from our officers. I. Like this notion of these pillows, I think is what they were called. I do have concern and and I I don't wanna, I mean. We're an hour and a half into the meeting, still have a lot of substance to cover. Um, so maybe not tonight. I I do have some concerns about these notions of. Uh, making the street narrower in certain areas. I I. That seems to be more of a safety concern, especially if, like if someone's racing at sixty. They're not gonna slow down and I think there's risk of a head-on collision um, in those narrower pockets. I don't, I. I don't study this for a living, so I'm throwing that out there and and I'd like to understand what that risk might be. Uh, if we're creating more of a risk, um, cause again, it seems to me uh, that uh. The pillows or humps or that sort of thing would probably be some of the more effective ways without. Again, taking road space by narrowing it. Um, posted speed limits are what they are, you know. Um, so I I personally oppose that. I'm just gonna throw that out there. And if I'm the lone dissent, that is what it is. Um. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Uh, if not, I'd like to move to the public comment portion of us. Seeing none, um, as always, same rules, got up to two minutes pro and con. So, you know, I I know there are folks that are here that are intrigued and interested, so my suggestion is kinda aggregate and designate. Um, so uh, we'll have the two minute run. Got the clock right there. Sir? Sure. And if you can give your name and you you don't have to give your address.
Dallas Green, live on West Court. Um, I wanna thank actually city staff. This has been a multi-year project. We got no response, but manager Lincoln, uh, Ms. Sarah. And Police Chief Roski have been very helpful. To the point about calling the police, Chief Roski and his team know. I'm on a first-name basis with the dispatchers, the officers. I think I'm now getting invited to kids' birthday parties. They're all at our house and our street all the time. At the end of the day, we need to do something. Um, Mister Messner, I invite you to come to my home. You can stay for a week. I'll give you all the beer, all the food you want. So you can see all the people that walk on the trail. It's an incredible number every day, walking and biking on that trail. And your calculations just do not play into it. Other question I have, when we talk about this average speed data, median speed data, and you're looking at your percentiles. What you're not seeing are the outliers. And the Pasco police did very good studies with their new equipment. And there were some terrifying outliers at some incredible speeds. And those are fatalities waiting to happen. And that does not show up. In Mister Messner's numbers, I believe. They just get washed away by the thousands of cars. So we are calling the police. We're seeing a lot of high outliers. I believe speed cushions will work better than chicanes and ugly pylons. But we have to remember the speed cushions at thirty miles an hour are a very different animal than speed cushions at twenty five. I would advocate twenty five miles an hour, speed cushions. And then I sent over earlier today. Uh, to Public Works, uh, USDOT study in two thousand placed crosswalks in six test cities. At uncontrolled intersections, it found eighty three percent had reductions in speed from crosswalks. No stop signs needed. Sixty seven percent had significant reduction. If we put just painted crosswalks at roads. One oh one, one oh three and one oh eight, that would be the lines in the road along with twenty five. Along with some speed cushions that I think we'd see something measurable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional, I'm I'm gonna call that a uh, a pro. Yeah, ad- advocating for further changes, so.
Reed Simpson on Court Street. This study is, I can't believe how inadequate it is as far as considering the pedestrians on the street. This crash stuff is great, but if you don't talk about pedestrians, which is really where it's at. There in anything about it in the in the study on the on the bike trail that comes down off both spans of the one eighty two, the the second we had trail. Nothing in that had, there were nothing suggested for that intersection. Where all the cars parked to get on the trail and and use it. And that's one of the big issues that. Would really help if your contractor, uh, Messner would go back and look at. Calming measures at the bridge for the trail coming across, cause somebody's gotta cross the trail. You just said it's sixty miles an hour. He's seeing him, I've called until they know my first name too. But it doesn't help. The calming measures have to be put into place. And the start in phase one should be at the bridge, cause that is an accident waiting to happen. Cause they fly through there, they see that straight off, heading off to the west. It's bad. So can you try to get your contractor here to readdress that situation at the bridge? Okay, cause um. And has there been any kind of comparison between east and west of one oh eight? Because there is some differences opinion is about how much traffic is coming in one oh eight or not. But anyway. Is there a way to have the contractor relook at that one oh eight side versus, you know, east or west side of that? And compare that, cause it seems like there's pretty fast drivers heading both east and west off one oh eight and.
Thank you for the comment.
Pete Vorteporth, I'm also on Court Street. Um, echoing kinda some of the discussion you've had and the understanding. Um, but but I wanna emphasize, a- again, Court Street from Road one hundred to about one oh nine. Absolutely flat, absolutely wide, wonderful pavement. It's ripe for speeders as, you know, o- other areas of the cities would 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 be also in those conditions. So I'm a, I'm a kind of a believer of breaking up the sightline as being key to uh, controlling the speeds. Um, I'm I'm fine with some of the other ideas as far as the uh, speed tables or things like that. I think that's. You know, that's fine also when we get into some phase two solutions. But you know, the uh, I do like the uh, breaking up the sightline of a one mi- or almost a one mile stretch. From Road one hundred to about one oh nine, again, is dead straight and absolutely flat and wide. So I'm thinking breaking up those sightlines with either the the chicane, the 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 widening, you know, some of the solutions that were. Mentioned in the phase two portion, I think is uh, should be given some strong consideration. The one comment I would make is the uh, um, the they had some pictures of those, uh, what do you call them, candlesticks or boullards or whatever we wanna call them. I I think that makes the street look like a construction zone. I think there are, there would be better solutions than than that. Maybe, you know, turtles or something, but I think that that those candlesticks just make it look like a construction zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You got room for one more comment? Yeah, so. Is is there any way you can get closer to them? And and the only reason I ask is because. It's it's helpful for folks watching, uh, and and look, we need to move.
Is that good?
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that. I I do apologize.
Pete Reiki, ninety one oh four West Puger Street. Uh, there we go. And I, is that on yet? He's gotta turn it on in the back there, but uh. So I, you know, I appreciate a lot of the comments here and I appreciate the council's interest in making Court Street safe for the community. A lot of emphasis on is on west of Road one hundred. I live east of Road one hundred and I'm across Court Street almost every day. And I'm up and down Road ninety six almost every day. Uh, and so I'm probably the premier pedestrian in that region of the community. Everybody knows me and the number one rule is don't kill the cripple. And that's one of the things that keeps people. From actually going too fast in my neighborhood. They see me coming and people stop and try to figure out what I'm doing. So making the area pedestrian friendly and promoting it as a pedestrian friendly area. Is what you wanna do. That will pe- make people aware, slow down traffic, slow down the people behind them. It won't solve the racer problem. We still have to solve that some other way. But making and putting in crosswalks across Court Street at eighty eight, at ninety two and at ninety six. And at Road one hundred, emphasize that also, as well as further west from there, I think is your best solution overall. Perhaps put in some blinkers at those areas, but promote it as pedestrian safety, as pedestrian safe and make it pedestrian safe. And you will reduce your speed limits. Uh, so I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry for the extra labor of getting you up.
That's okay. It always happens.
Well, we appreciate that, Mister Messner. Hopefully you've uh, got some notes from those comments as well as the council discussion there. Uh, one. Question, where's CitTech based out of that did this study?
Um, Sean is located in Spokane. And he's uh, besides the work that he's doing in this project, which is grant funded. He's the contracted traffic engineer for the city, so he visits city of Pasco regularly.
Yeah, yeah, my follow-up would be, I like hearing from our residents and I like their idea of the uh, the crosswalks going across, especially the uh, two or three of them.
Excellent. Well, again, I think uh, hopefully Sean, you got some notes from that and hopefully we can find some ways to simplify and. Make some quick decisions. Um, you know, it sounds like there's a possibility to slow things without infrastructure. Uh, so we'll look forward to for further follow-up, Ms. Sarah. With that, we'll move on to item D, which is capital improvement plan. Uh, we've got Reacher Sidell, Deputy City Manager, uh, presenting us this one.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, and evening council. Um, we have introduced slightly the capital improvement plan process a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and today we're back with a little bit more detail and um, a a path forward and a direction from council as well. Um, as we've discussed, uh, capital improvement plan or C I P. Uh, is a comprehensive uh, strategic blueprint uh, for our capital projects. Uh, and uh, they usually can last for longer, but the minimum time is six years. And so that is what you'll see. Uh, it encompasses um, a major infrastructure project. So you'll see. Uh, municipal facilities like uh, our police station, fire stations, uh, our parks, uh, facilities. Um, our utilities, all of the projects related to uh, our many utilities. Uh, and of course, transportation. So you'll see all of those projects. Uh, how it differs from uh, T I P, which is a process that you've recently gone through, uh, is that. Uh, they're both planning documents, so that's the similarity. Uh, C I P includes all of the transportation projects. Um, and um, and so does T I P. Uh, however, C I P is a little bit more streamlined. And more resource constrained, even though they're both planning document. Uh, a large part of that is because we're using uh, many times C I P as a tool specifically for our next budget cycle. Uh, to ensure that uh, whatever we have uh, in our uh, plans. Uh, can uh, actually be executed. Um, that's not, it's still a plan, but we usually take that data. Um, and our goal is to be able to uh, have this planning document be fairly reliable for the next budget cycle. To be able to take that to our capital budget and and come to council for approval. And please stop me if you have any questions as I'm, as I'm going through this. So with that in mind, um, our funding strategy uh, needs to be uh, fairly on point. Um, and we're looking at internal and external funds. So uh, we have internal funds that are uh, some of our funds like arterial overlay, traffic impact fund. Uh, park impact, uh, park development fund, uh, and real estate excise tax fund. Uh, these are all uh, funds within the city's portfolio and how the the finances of the city works. Uh, is that while the city and the council is all is responsible for all of these funds. Uh, you are um, also, they're also, you're also responsible to make sure. That uh, these funds are utilized in a manner that is prescriptive to that specific fund. So for example, arterial, you can only use that uh, to work on arterial streets. So you cannot use that for any other purposes. Um, so think of them like uh, your different bank accounts. So your general fund, your arterial fund. Your traffic impact fund, let's say you had a bank account for travel, um, then, you know, if you were. Uh, if you, your family was very prescriptive, uh, and you could not use that travel fund for any other uh, purpose than travel. Um, so that's kind of the use of some of our restricted uh, capital funds that are internal. Uh, and we also have um, development fees and rates uh, from our utilities. So connection fees for water, let's say. You cannot use that for sewer. Uh, also people who pay for water rates, they're using for infrastructure. That is related to water, so you cannot use that for irrigation. Uh, general fund is the only fund within your portfolio where you can use that money for really anything. Um, that largely pays for uh, public safety, your H R, your city manager's office. Um, but uh, and it can give money to any other fund freely, um, but um. It cannot take money from other funds without some substantial uh, backup documentation. Uh, also loans, uh, they're internal as in they're paid via internal funds, any debt service. And when I uh, say loans here, they're usually uh, low interest loans that the city is receiving and they're competitive in nature. Like they are many grants, but we have debt service for that. And so uh, the rates would usually pay for debt service. Uh, and same with regular debt, which is when you issue a bond like we did recently for our tax increment. Uh, and same with regular debt, which is when you issue a bond like we did recently for our tax increment financing. Some of our external funds are donations, partnerships, I would say. One recent one was with Pasco School District over the pool bubble. Uh, and then grants that we receive from federal and state agencies. And then proportionate shares where we are um, uh, asking our development partners uh, for uh, their share on mitigation of some of the impacts of the development. And within those kinds of funds, um, internal are usually secured, uh, but overall they're secured and unsecured. Uh, you're looking at existing reserves. So arterial, if you have reserves to to do a certain project, that is a secured fund. We also look at uh, and do some projections for next five years, six years out to ensure that all of our projects can handle uh, the the projects that we've allocated these funds, uh, these funds to. We also have grants that are awarded to us, uh, donations that are committed and the debts that are issued. Uh, similarly on the unsecured side, you have uh, targeted grants. So we want to go after an RCO grant, but um, we have not received it yet. Um, there's also donations that we've discussed, but they're not committed. Um, debts that are issued, uh, also more importantly, if they're issued, uh, it would require maybe rate increases to support that level of investment uh, on the facility. Um, and um, many times, especially if the project is out there or maybe is a unique one where there's not as many um, opportunities for grants, uh, we leave them as unknown sources and kind of as time goes, we identify um, the sources for those projects. What we do with unsecured funds, uh, it is, it is a little bit um, interesting to add projects as in your priority and your plan, but you have no money for it. Uh, but there is a, there is a, there is a plan um, that we follow and a strategy that we follow. Uh, we have um, we many times look at uh, especially for large projects. Uh, they are broken out in chunks like design. Uh, for large projects, we will try to find money for design or maybe internally fund the design uh, so that it increases our chances to get the construction grants. Um, so we will do that. So you you'll sometimes see unsecured um, pro- funds for projects that are critical for uh, the city. Uh, there's also a need as we go out to our uh, granting agencies to say, hey, we really need this. But if it's not in your plan, then you know, the other agency can say, well, clearly you don't need it that bad, right? And so it's important to include those projects. Uh, more importantly, uh, it's really important for uh, all of us uh, to look at the projects that are needed throughout the city and keep them visible. Um, so it's important to leave it in the um, in the plan, uh, even though there might not be secured funds. Uh, and what we do as staff uh, with unsecured funds, we, we really try not to add any projects in the next biennium if they are unsecured. Uh, but if we do have to do that and council approves it, uh, what we do is we do not spend that money because we've not secured it yet. Um, so we go out, especially for grants that we have really good chance for. Even though they're not secured, we might ask council if it's if it's okay to add it in the biennium budget. Um, and also at the same time, if grants have not been identified, uh, we'll look to pursue external funding for projects within the biennium or outside of that. This is a really small uh, font, but I think it's for a good reason. Uh, these are all of the uh, projects uh, that are completed or anticipated to be completed by the end of this year. Um, it's about thirty two projects and I really want to give um, a lot of kudos to our public works department uh, who has worked really hard uh, to uh, th- this is just the completed project. All of the work that comes before that uh, is the lion's share of the work that they do. Uh, and as you drive through the city, you see all of the work uh, that they've been doing kind of come to fruition. And hopefully next year they will be on this list. Um, so I really want to thank Public Works and also all of the other departments who have partnered with them uh, to make the projects come true and also council for supporting them. But these are the thirty two projects and I have a much more legible list on yours, on the staff report as well. So our timeline for CIP is um, we already did the introduction presentation uh, in June twenty fourth. Uh, you also have a draft project list. It's a fairly rough list at this time. Uh, staff is still going through and making some revisions, but it gives you a pretty good idea of what the staff will be proposing. Uh, we appreciate your input, your review, uh, any, any big things that we have, might have missed um, that we would like to add. Uh, we would like to go out to the public to get their feedback. Uh, we have uh, outreach, uh, public meetings scheduled. Uh, we will do two in person and one virtual. So people who cannot meet in person can also attend. Uh, we will be working on detailed project sheets and maps. So it's easier to know exactly the scope of the projects. Uh, we do not have a deadline um, per se with CIP. We do have a deadline, end of this year, but uh, there's not an imminent deadline uh, for CIP. Uh, the goal is to wrap this up with our budget as well, um, and be able to transfer a lot of our capital projects from this document to our budget document, um, as council reviews and approves the projects. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm open to answer them.
Thank you, Miss Sidell. Mr. Graham.
Thank you. I just want to um, yes, add on to what um, our deputy city manager said about the thirty two items that have been completed. That represents a lot of work around the city. Thank you so much, yes, for doing all that. And um, yeah, I mean, it's, that is a massive list, you know, you look at the tolls at the bottom and everything going on in our growing city and I just look forward to, yeah, digging into that and um, get to the bottom of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, uh, same sentiment. When everybody takes time to complain and and you know what, on Facebook, I want to just send them this, look at what we're getting done. So kudos to you and your staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd definitely say that uh, you know, that there are some pain points in the city. We've got some serious projects that are happening simultaneously. But that's to avoid the future pain, you know, um, the city's grown a lot. We've needed infrastructure. Uh, we've been trying to make sure that we've been as wise with with the money that we have and, you know, come the end of the year, we're going to see some significant completion projects. Um, you know, just using uh, road one hundred. It, you know, it was really painful for those first three to four weeks and then people got used to it and now right now, there's a bit of a choke point as they work through it and once that's complete, it's complete, you know, and we're going to start checking stuff off and you're going to start seeing traffic move, you know, a little more smoothly throughout the city and and again, we can either try to use the retrospective hindsight eyes, which is never twenty twenty, even though it's supposed to be. Um, because some of us didn't live through it, or we can use that forward looking eyes and say, all right, this is where we need to take the city to make it with the growth that we've got projected. So again, thank you and kudos to staff for uh, staying on top of that. Do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice. Seeing none, we're going to move on to item uh, E, which is resolutions. It's approving two developer reimbursement agreements with Big Sky developers. Uh, Mr. Harp.
Yep.
Are you pointing to him or you?
I am.
Okay, so yeah, Mr. Harpster has some comments.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and recuse myself from the side of this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Eric. I wasn't sure if you were trying to jump in with something before he said something. Okay, no. I I appreciate being on that and I hope I didn't come across rude there. Um, with that, got Mr. Gonzalez, but also Mr. Cartwright rising. So someone's going to talk.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and members of council. And first, I'd like to formally introduce our development services manager, Brian Cartwright. Um, as he's uh, at the podium and uh, this item is related to two developer reimbursement agreements uh, for subdivisions, residential subdivisions. Um, quick overview of the latecomer development, developer review uh, process. Um, latecomer agreements are also known as reimbursement agreements. Uh, they serve as a valuable tool for property owners enabling them to uh, recover costs, cure for street or utility improvements, um, eligible costs. Um, under these agreements encompass a wide spectrum of infrastructure, including transportation, water, sewer and stormwater facilities. Um, the city plays a uh, a role in overseeing and facilitating uh, these agreements and ensuring adherence to established standards, regulations. That's both uh, our municipal code and the state RCWs. And additionally, a part of our responsibility involves notifying uh, future property owners of potential reimbursement obligations. And with that quick introduction, I'll pass on to Brian, uh, who will provide a description of the two projects for your uh, discussion this evening. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, council. Um, you already introduced me, but I'm uh, Brian Cartwright, development services manager for the City of Pasco. I'm going to try to be respectful of your time because it's already running late and it looks like there's about thirty minutes left of discussion items. Uh, but I'm here to present two separate resolutions for your consideration uh, which will authorize the city manager to enter into development revert reimbursement agreements, also known as latecomers agreements with Big Sky developers. These agreements include involve utility improvements that benefit not only Big Sky, but properties that neighbor their neighbor their properties. Uh, Big Sky developers undertook two projects, the Dunes, a residential subdivision, and Spencer Estates Four, another residential subdivision. Both projects included essential utility improvements necessary for development. These improvements have also benefited other pars- parcels that did not contribute to the initial cost. Specifically, uh, other parcels that did, excuse me, specifically, these were water utility uh, improvement projects outlined in the Water Comprehensive Plan that were prerequisites for this development. Preliminary notices were sent to all the benefiting parcels, providing a protest procedure. The protest period expired with no objections. Uh, as Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, the city is required by statute to enter into these agreements. Uh, it's a relatively common practice. The current, the city currently has roughly twenty of these agreements pending. So uh, presentations like this uh, will become in uh, increasingly more frequent. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, the slideshow uh, shows the Spencer Estates benefiting parcels along with some uh, action photos here. This is the PRV station that was installed for the the Dunes PRV along with their benefiting area. I think we missed some action photos, the very, very beginning of the water line going in for uh, the Dunes Latecomers.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright for that. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Cartwright? Looks like you got off easy tonight. Thank you for the information. It's always uh, super helpful. You know, it's it's great to see that we recognize where folks have their share and we've got a process here. With that, thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Do you want to go get, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mullin. When, oh, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time. Okay. Thank you with that. Again, thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Good to see you. Um, we're going to move on to item F, which is continued discussion of city council rules of conduct. City manager Lincoln.
Thanks, Mayor Council. Um, you'll see in the packet, there were some uh, items that were made based on the comments from council last go through. Um, and really just looking for feedback to make sure that we're uh, in in line with what you're thinking for for those edits. And and certainly if if not tonight, I'm happy to send up a follow out, a follow up email to make sure that we're we're in line in in the um, respective the the hour certainly.
Uh, Ms. Braz.
I'm not to extend the meeting, but I will be reaching out with some uh, questions um, for your, and waiting for your comments on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Harpster.
Uh, yeah, I went back and looked at my notes compared to the new uh, version and I think everything was covered and as far as I'm concerned, we're ready to bring this to a regular meeting for a vote. Thanks.
Yep. Seeing no further questions or comments from council, uh, Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, just real quick, the only thing I would add, uh, just uh, we are having a little bit of a struggle trying to uh, combine a couple of things. We've got some uh, thing, the few things that we do have in our code uh, with regard to duties of the mayor as well as uh, uh, some remote attendance. We're trying to make sure that those are uh, going through and and uh, kind of checking to make sure there's no inconsistency between those. Um, so those, because those should be uh, identical um, with regard to those sections. Uh, the other, some of the other items that uh, the 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 major one that we've spent probably the most time on was the question about uh, uh, the hate, uh, said, the reference to the hate speech or bias and those types of things. And I did want just to make sure that uh, that we were kind of all on the same page. I mentioned last time that we would have to go back and kind of retool that because that seemed antiquated and and I was correct, it it certainly is antiquated. So uh, we are going to have to uh, remove uh, any kind of reference to that because that certainly is a content uh, specific, not neutral. And so um, uh, there are some things that we can do in terms of tools. This has become a hot topic because uh, a lot of meetings have been hijacked by uh, certain speakers and things. So there are some things that we can kind of nibble around the edges, but at the end of the day, if somebody wants to get up and they're uh, properly uh, uh, recognized by the by the chair and and they're speaking and and somebody doesn't like what they're saying, uh, there's there's not much we, there's nothing you can do. So um, anyway, so just wanted to put, get that on your radar and and uh, we did try to, you can see in the, in this uh, draft version, you can see that uh, we did try to make that change, the suggestion uh, from council member Harpster and then uh, after having done some more legal analysis, uh, you can see we had to strike it out. So um, anyway, I just wanted to keep it in there so you knew what we tried to do. So uh, but it looks like it's not going to happen that way. So um, but um, but we're ready for it uh, in uh, in in order to be able to advise you, uh, if and when a situation comes up, we can uh, we'll have the tools ready to to do everything that we can.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ferguson. So it sounds like uh, we've got some outstanding comments from 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 Ms. Braz. I think that's what you.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's just uh, you.
Your lights.
Thank you. Sorry about that. And uh, thank you for the clarification. I just need some additional clarification on some of the topics that you touched on. Thank you.
All right, with that, we got uh, Ms. Blais though.
I just have one, I guess, comment that I don't believe we've talked about and I don't see in here. Um, currently if, do we have anything set, speaking to the media or is it um, typically the mayor that would deal with the media or how would that?
So uh, that typically wouldn't be included, not that I uh, we could find out uh, how some other folks handle that, but generally that wouldn't be covered within the council rules uh, for the actual meetings and things. Uh, we can add some additional uh, language uh, that may have to do with the outside discussions. Uh, that's certainly we, something we could explore. I haven't had any experience with that, but um, we can certainly look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
I was just going to add that my recollection from our previous discussions regarding this was that we didn't want to limit any council members' ability to be able to speak to the media if they chose to do so.
Okay. Seeing no further questions or comments from council, uh, public comment opportunity. Any interest once? Any interest twice? No interest with a third. With that, we'll move on to item G, discussion of twenty twenty four, twenty five city council goals and city manager work plan. And it looks like we got back to you, Mr. Lincoln.
Thanks, Mayor Council. Uh, again, there's slides if you'd like to go through them and I want to make sure that the verbiage is, has been uh, reflective of what you you discussed last time through. Um, I'd also just add that uh, there's a couple of things on the estimated timeframe that we'll, we'll want to modify before adoption. I think there's some that still say June on here that um, require an email to council that will will circle back with staff and make sure those happen. Um, also there is an economic development plan that wasn't budgeted for for this year. That would take uh, until several months past what was, what was listed in here, I think is August of this year or maybe December, but still is going to take some time. So a- aside from modifying some of the the deliverable dates, um, I I don't think I have any feedback from council on on making further modifications. And again, this is meant to be fairly evergreen as well. So if there's other things that come up from council that are priorities, we'll add them on there. To note that they were additions rather than something from uh, uh, the the goal setting retreat. Um, your feedback was loud and clear that next go around, you'd like this to to happen sooner in the the calendar year. And I think next time we're going to try and focus more on a a ro- robust uh, strategic plan. Um, council can kind of put their stamp on a a vision, mission statement, core values and 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 have projects that you'd you'd like to see staff focus on. So it'll probably be a little bit more of a a commitment, but I think it's a direction that you're seeing several city councils head in where it's 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 real. where it's, it's, it's really setting that tone from, from the absolute top for, for the community and for staff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Um, personally, I don't have a need to go through the slides. I don't know if, but that's, I'm seeing, a handful of head nods, Ms. Braz.
No, I don't need to go through the slides. I was just going to make some additions or just some things to talk about. Uh, I didn't really see anything on there about homelessness or mental health. I think I alluded to that in the beginning with the legislative, um, or interim action plan. I want to see something more on there about what, what our role is and what we're trying to do, you know, partner, partnering with the county and, you know, all the other, um, organizations in the community. I would just, you know, what is our, what is our role, what is our goal in, in that, in that regard? And I would also like to see, try to see animals out there be added, maybe perhaps under licenses, um, and inspections. And that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Braz. And Mr. Lincoln, uh, do you have any further clarification on that?
Uh, I, I think it would warrant a conversation with council about what, what deliverables you're looking for when it comes to homelessness and mental health, um, as, aside from maybe listing the partnerships. But, um, I, I think in that instance, there's, there's certainly presentations that, uh, Chief Crowley can, can provide as far as updates on the, the committee that focuses on, on mental health. Um, I, I think council will need to better define what, what it is that you're looking for when it comes to, um, programs that deal with homelessness. I think that would be helpful to, to understand. Uh, and then with regard to the Tri-Cities Animal Shelter, I'd need to understand too what, what the, the goal is with regards to that, that topic.
Can I clarify those? Yeah, I mean, I just want to bring them up for discussion if we're going to have maybe another retreat. Let's just talk about it. Yeah, you know, just, just conversation starters, more or less. That's what I should have prefaced with that.
Perfect. No, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Um, I, I appreciate that. I will, I will kind of jump off that, and then I'll slide to Mr. Harpster and Mr. Grim. Uh, to the extent that we do decide to touch on something with homelessness, I think, uh, and this may be too nebulous of a goal, but with the new Supreme Court rulings coming out, we're obviously already in the process of modifying our code for sit- lie ordinances. Uh, whether or not the Grants Pass case, uh, is going to help us to expand that. I, I, I think there's a goal that we may want to, um, whether, maybe it's more of an internal thing, but having the conversation about what can the city, uh, really do at this point? Can we expand those efforts to revise the code to au- you know, authorize our police? And, and to the extent that it touches fire, um, but more so obviously for the policing elements. Um, is there something that we can do proactively? Uh, I don't know if the rest of the council has that same sentiment. Um, but obviously, there's a potential big, big opening for us to do a little bit more. So I'll throw that out there. If we get enough head nods, maybe that's something. I don't think it's an attractive goal, but I think it's something that we work towards. Does that make sense? Okay, so if there are enough support, then, uh, maybe we'll somehow incorporate that into the discussion without doing so. Mr. Harpster.
I was just going to say that all my comments were addressed, and I, I was going to say, I think we're good to roll, but, uh, not quite there yet. But appreciate getting all my comments addressed at least.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with your sentiments, and I've talked to staff and Chief Roski and everything about some of those things. Same things with the outcome of, um, Grants Pass versus Johnson. I think that is a great tool for us to have in our tool chest. And no, I just want to say again, as I've said every time this comes up, thank you. I think that's, um, city manager Lincoln and staff have done an excellent job of encapsulating our ideas and our direction. And now just hopefully they'll go execute and implement it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing your homework. Now do more. It's the punishment. Uh, with that, I don't know that, uh, I don't see any further lights on. Do we have any public comment on the, our city council goals for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? Rolling once, rolling twice, third time? With that, we are, uh, closing out section five, and we're rolling on to miscellaneous council discussion. Um, Mr. Harpster, uh, Mr. Lincoln, usually you kick off.
One, one quick item, I think, sir, has, and, and we'll go from there.
We wanted to announce or just share with everybody, there is a workshop, um, City of Pasco is hosting this Wednesday. It is on stormwater management, uh, manual. The Eastern Washington manual has been republished. And we have coordinated with ecology, Department of Ecology staff to be present and provide this as a resource to, um, not only staff, but also other cities and, uh, developers and contractors and designers. So that is available. It will occur here in this room. Uh, there is a way to register for it, and also if you choose to participate online, that is available as well. Thank you.
And where would they find that information? Is that on our website?
Yes, all of that is in the website. Thank you.
What's the time? Sorry, I got, I got the dates, Wednesday.
It is Wednesday, July twenty-fourth at ten thirty, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all reaching out to our regulated community. Mr. Harpster?
Uh, yeah, probably, I think probably Public Works. I was driving around Pasco after being gone for a couple of weeks and saw the logo painted on the Zone Three water reservoir. Um, just want to pass along how cool I thought that looked and, um, better than the other two water, uh, towers and certainly the one that used to be light blue in the nineties with the little ripples on it. So it's really cool, and I don't know about anybody else, but it fills me with Pasco pride.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Mr. Grim, and then I'm going to circle back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to, you know, throw it out. It is boat race weekend, you guys. And I appreciate Director Sarah getting that information out on the website. And then really just even driving up, um, and down Sylvester, where council member, um, Harpster and I live in that area, I can see a lot of improved signage, a lot of improved direction and everything like that. And just hopefully that helps the masses as they come in this weekend. So thank you again for following up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Braz.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two items, and I'll be very fast. I hope they go fast. Um, first thing was, um, the Latin Business Association and a lot of the downtown businesses, um, by the Lower Street Overpass would like to do a grand reopening kind of that area, um, next month on the eighteenth. And they're asking if the city would waive like twelve, thirteen hundred dollar fee in order to put that on. It's for the traffic control. So I just wanted to present that to the council. Maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting. And then, um, the billboards. We spent some time on this. We, we had a workshop. And so I just wanted to see if we're going to continue with this or if this is going to come for a vote. Obviously, I think I've been pretty vocal. I would be a yes vote, but I just want to present to the, the council tonight. And if there's any discussion we need to have, um, you know, we can brief about it. But I would like for it to come back for a vote at least. Thank you.
Any, anybody got any thoughts or comments there?
I got thoughts on both. Uh, no to the first, yes to the second.
So what would a yes be?
So the Latin Business Association thing, pass on that. The, um, second item billboard would like to at least get that one to the finish line and have a vote on it and not just let it, uh, dissipate.
Okay, uh, Mr. Grim.
Yes and yes. Yes, son. I agree with council member Paralis as far as waiving the fee. And yes, um, let's bring the billboards to the finish line for a vote.
Ms. Braz.
Um, question first, yeah. Um, do we normally waive fees for any of the other events?
So I think a couple of things. We, one, we'd have to look at whether or not we legally can waive the, the fee for the, the traffic, um, component. Um, especially when it's not a, a city event, a city-sponsored event. Let me be clear with the language. Um, I, I think that it's a, it's a fee that they have to, I, someone can correct me here, but a fee for, um, closing the street, uh, and having the analysis done. So I, I think we'd have to know, we'd have to know more about what our, our ability is to do that. But I, I think it would be, no, it's not something that we would typically do. Um, and then there's, I think, the, the security component too, which is another factor, which, uh, is that asked, is that being asked to be waived as well, or do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. No, not that I'm aware of. I can ask, but, I mean, the Grants Community, I mean, we just dropped fifteen thousand dollars for COPA. Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not a city-sponsored event, but I think twelve hundred dollars is a drop in the bucket. Um, like in comparison to the money that we've cut some checks today, so that's all I'll say.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to make sure, Ms. Braz, where you covered there.
Um, well, my response would be no on that matter. Just pending, pending what, uh, whatever you find out. But I would say no, uh, you bring up the COPA event, that was in partnership with, uh, a citywide, uh, three-city-wide event. Um, this one in particular is not a, it's, it's, community is invited, but it doesn't benefit the city-wide per what Mr. Lincoln said. So I, um, yeah, no, um, it, it's, yeah, no.
Okay. And that's a, that's a no-no, right?
It's a no. No, and, and depending on the.
Ms. Blaze though.
Uh, I'm not in favor of closing the street. We just got done. Dealing, closing the street for how long? So I'm definitely not in favor of closing the street down. If they want to have a grand reopening, do it with the street open. That's my two cents on that. Um, and I don't see the reference between COPA and a grand reopening. That just is two completely separate issue or separate partnerships or, I guess, apples to, it doesn't make sense to me. So I'm not, I don't understand where the reference is.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, fifteen thousand dollars was given to an organization. Um, so that's what I mean. So, I mean, the, the.
We just gave them money, they could apply to get money from a fund. I mean, they had the opportunity of receive money as well. So I'm not, COPA, it, again, that doesn't.
Who was that?
The business owners that were affected by closing down the Lower Street Overpass.
So you're saying the business owners should use that money to?
No, I'm saying that has nothing to do with COPA. So what I'm saying is, why would we shut down the street for a grand reopening where we just gave them money because we, we're not, I mean, why would we close down the street again?
That's a good point, and me and, uh, city manager Lincoln discussed that same thing. Um, so I understand your guys' sentiment, but I, I looked at more or less, it's like a donation to a, you know, nonprofit.
We just gave, we just donated money. We, we just.
Those were for the businesses that were impacted.
So, um, I'll, I'll jump in here. Do you have a position on a second, with the inquiry in there, Ms. Blaze though? The sec, on the second issue, which was, uh, the billboards. There we go.
I mean, I do want to wrap it up. I think we've spent enough time on billboards as well.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Melly, uh, Ms. Blaze, are you done?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Melly.
I'm kind of immaterial. I mean, if, as far as the shutting down the road, I would like to see what our, um, but as far as twelve hundred, doesn't really, it's kind of a drop in the bucket, what Mr. Braz said. Um, I'm definitely wanting to get the billboard, see where we're at that, and just get it voted and move forward on that.
Um, so I mean, it sounds like it's evenly split on the road issue. I'm just going to go ahead and toss a no out. Um, that way we can save our city attorney's resources, unless there's a reason to do the review of the gifting of public funds or whatever your analysis would have been there.
Yeah, so essentially what it comes down to is, uh, would it qualify as, uh, like an economic development event? Uh, uh, obviously, under the gifting analysis, we'd have to make sure that, uh, it wasn't, uh, specifically a donation. That's one of the things that, that is, is per se not allowed. So it would have to be, uh, for a, uh, a benefit to the community, which we can do under economic development. But it has to be clear, uh, what that is and what the consideration is that the city's going to be receiving in return uh, for, for the actual event. So, um, and, and waiving of the fee complicates that analysis, I think, a little bit because it's going to be tough to, to kind of make a connection to what the actual benefit or consideration that the city would be rece- receiving in return. Um, so, um, certainly happy to, uh, take a peek at it. And it's not, uh, I don't think it would take a, a ton of time to tell you whether it's legal or not. But, uh, it's, it's certainly at first blush, a little problematic the way it's been, uh, I guess, presented, but.
I mean, I guess if it'll be quick analysis, go ahead and, I, I'll, I'll put mine as a maybe.
I will, I will prom, I will stop working at thirty minutes, I swear, so.
Fair enough. So you won't cost us twelve hundred dollars. Thank you.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I have a one-hour minimum, so that's just too bad.
You're not McDonald's anymore. Okay. Um, and then as to the billboard thing, I know there were some still, some outstanding questions or notions about what we might do in downtown. Do we need to close those loops before moving forward?
I, I think staff would bring it back as a continued discussion because, yeah, I think there's still a lot of, you're right, un- unanswered, and, and it seemed like council had a, a variety of, of items that were worth more discussion. So I, I don't believe that's ready for a vote, but appreciate the, the discussion tonight.
Okay, but you got the sense of moving it?
Yes.
Right on. All right, uh, do we have any additional miscellaneous discussion? Seeing none, I see no executive session. I'm going to hold my breath. And got no response, so I'm assuming that's still a no. With that, it is nine twenty-five, and we are adjourned. Thank you.